We're starting. Okay, okay. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Well, first we have the invocation. Okay. We have the invocation by Reverend Chris Lawrence of the Pentecostals of the Gulf Coast. Is he here? Is he here? No? Okay. Since we do not have the Reverend here, we'll go ahead and ask Dr. Tisdale if he'll go ahead and say our prayer.
I just want you to know, always keep a prayer handy. You never know. You can stay. Oh God, when I have food, help me to remember the hungry. When I have work, help me to remember the jobless. When I have a home, help me to remember those who have no home at all. And when I am without pain, help me to remember those who suffer. And remembering, help me to destroy my complacency, bestir my compassion, and be concerned enough to help, by word and deed, those who cry out for what we take for granted. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Dr. Tisdale? We can have Councilwoman Newman to lead us into her place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the love of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Those opposed? Approved unanimously. Mayor's report?
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, here today. And I think we're here today on a Friday because we successfully came through this threat of harm with this hurricane. So I think part of the prayer, too, is thank you for the not challenging us with the harm and destruction that could have come our way. So with that, I just want to talk about a couple of things. I think Kay is supposed to come up here from the mental health, and Keith, too, Wilson. And they might, for some reason, want to present something.
Thank you. I'm Kay Denault. I'm with Mental Health Association of South Mississippi. And Keith is on our Board of Directors. He's on our Executive Committee. And you guys supported us through our annual event, the Don't Worry, Be Happy event. Several of you were there. And so we just had a little certificate of thank you for Mayor Gillich and all the council for all the support they give to our organization.
Great. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to note. You know, about two years ago, there was some effort from OIG to FEMA regarding our project, our infrastructure project. And about two years ago, they, OIG, decreed there was an over-obligation that we're going to deobligate about $8 million of the program management that started in 2013 and '14. And as we came through the various channels in Washington, and we were told not to worry about it, that FEMA would reject that, not pay any attention to the OIG findings about the excessive amount of money in the program management. That was HNTB contract that was started. And, you know, as you know, in '16, we bit the bullet, you know, after they ran out of money halfway through the project, that we assumed with Walt and his crew and some of the RPR services, we went forward. But in thinking all along that, you know, we're not going to have to worry about that. Lo and behold, about how many months ago? Three months ago, FEMA came and said, hey, we need to deobligate that based on OIG. And we had 60 days to respond. We did, Walt and our legal team, and crafted our response within the 60-day timeframe. Just recently, yesterday, FEMA, you know, interacting with MEMA. MEMA went through about eight pages of response in support of our response. Bottom line, Gregory Michelle, who was the head of MEMA at this point in time, to sum it up, did a tremendous job of background in how everything was procured and how everything proceeded. And to sum it up, I think Mike wrote it in big letters here, but the tremendous letter, tremendous support in saying that the state agrees with the applicant, the city of Biloxi, that all criteria have been met, and that FEMA is therefore statutorily prohibited from retroactively deobligating the cost at issue. So that was a big letter and a big, you know, round of help, I think, in concurrence of what we did. So that was, you know, a hurdle. Take $8 million dollars they've already paid. So we thank the state, MEMA, and their staff. And I think exactly the director, or the assumed director, will be here on the 12th to review, you know, and ride the project. So we're very appreciative of that letter of support. So, and that pretty much concludes it. Let me just say, I just can't get used to report to the city council on the Biloxi travel expense credit card to spread upon the minutes of this meeting, whatever that means. So, you know.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Appreciate sharing the letter, too. That's good news. Counsel reports. Mr. Lawrence? I don't think, no departmental reports? No? There's none.
I thought we were going back to, are they going to take care of what we owe and what was billed? I'm aware we had, are they going to back us up, like you said, completely and put the money in place?
They paid the money. They haven't withheld any money. MEMA has not withheld any money. FEMA has not withheld from MEMA the request to go forward. So it's just a threat, whether it's, you know, immediately or at the end of the project, whatever. That's what's at stake. But, you know, again, we did our homework as a city, took the bull by the horns because that, we significantly reduced the amount of RPR and program management when we took it on ourselves. But it's still there, and it's, you know, it's been a number of days. We responded in a timely manner. MEMA supported that effort. And throughout this letter, if you read it, it's a good letter. It's a great letter, to tell you the truth. And, you know, of course, our appeal was that way, too. So we don't know, but it could be years, so.
What do you mean?
Before we hear from them.
You're talking about before they reimburse us?
Before they try to get the $8 million back.
Try to get the $8 million back, okay.
Yeah. They paid all along, you know, from '13 and '14, especially the $13 million upfront with regard to mobilization. There's special circumstances. What was it called? Special services. That was part of the whole initial set of infrastructure projects. So time and time again, it mentions special services, not just, you can't apply a percentage because there were things like geotech, you know, services and other special services that this all came up, and they approved it, MEMA and FEMA, as it went through the process. Now, OIG said, hey, you can't do this statutorily. We met the three criteria that we met, and that, so therefore, you can't do it. And so it's not, it's gone, but it sure, it seems like we're in pretty good shape.
The letter from the state, was that from the governor?
No. This is from a special, this is Gregory Michelle, the head of MEMA, more recently. But we, the governor did sign it? Yeah, representative of the governor.
Wow. That's good news. Glad to hear that. As far as the little hurricane we didn't have, it's a good practice. Picked everything up, put it all back out. But those are the kind of things you like to do. Those are the kind of hurricanes you like. The one that gets over at my mobile. So once it does that, we're in good shape. I mean, that was probably one of the prettiest days we had in a long time. That was a great day.
That's all. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, just finally something broke our way with this infrastructure project on the north. It's probably taken three good years out of my life, and finally to have something finally break our way. HNTB, you know, came and took $20 million from us and don't feel like we got any results from them. So $8 million is nothing compared to the $20 million that they've already took from us. And that's something that I feel like we need to look into because of all the mistakes that were made from an engineering aspect of it, which essentially is going to cost us, the city, a whole lot. So we need to probably kind of look into that. But I'm thankful that we finally got a break to come our way eventually. Other than that, we all made it through the storm, so we had a great week, great week. Thank you.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on the FEMA and the OIG, so we're in pretty good shape. We got a letter of support from the state folks, but we still have not had it signed, sealed, and delivered. Right. So we're still cruising along here, but it looks like the winds are favorable. And I would tell you, after going to a number of meetings, I know the mayor's been pushing for this since the time he took office. And just very quickly, it's very significant because we still have a lot of work to do. And at one time, I don't know if the council remembers, we had, we used to have contractors out here that were 60, 90, 120 days since they'd been paid, and it was a cash flow issue. And I will say this, the mayor did yeoman's work and got the money going and flowing again. So that folks got paid in a timely manner. That was tough work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. I'm assuming there will be, at some point in the future, further meetings for input on the waterfront project? Okay. And because I know there's some folks in the public who would love to be involved or whatever. On the consent agenda tonight, we're rescinding, on item P, we're rescinding a resolution passed earlier dealing with pickleball. And you can never get enough pickleball. And item Q approves a more general resolution or request to the Board of Supervisors. So basically, we're rescinding P, and in its place, we're approving Q. I appreciate your support on that. A reminder to my colleagues on this side of the bench at the Council of Government meets Wednesday of next week at 5:00 at the Convention Center. They'll feed you, and they have invited state legislators to give us a legislative update. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout from all the elected officials in Harrison County, including the supervisors. So I hope you can make that meeting. Also, I would tell you that I'm getting great feedback on the live streaming on Facebook of council meetings. I've heard from several folks, and I always hear transparent followed closely by accountable. So I'm just saying, keep up the good work. Also, I had somebody contact me on the south side of the Pops Ferry Bridge. There's a mattress in Box Spring and trash by the water. It may be under the bridge there. If somebody could just take a peek, maybe there's something to it. It may be something we could move to the waterfront project when we get it up and gone. I'm just saying, I'm trying to think positive. Recycle. That concludes my comments. Again, good job, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Barrett?
Monday night at 7:00, we'll be having a Ward Seven meeting at the new community center on Kayleigh Cove. And then Friday night, the 14th, I believe, at 7:00 PM, is that correct? Or dark, something like that, we're going to have our first movie night in Ward Seven. Thanks to Sherri Bell for working hard to make that happen. So that's Monday night, Ward meeting, Friday night, Ward Seven, movie night. That's all I have.
Okay. And I have no report. We'll go ahead and move to the public agenda and the public hearing.
Public hearing to provide the general public with an opportunity to comment on the taxing and spending plan incorporated in the proposed budget of Mississippi, Biloxi, Mississippi, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any comments on the budget? Are we going to do any kind of review on the screen, or do we have any information? I'm sorry. Come on up. Okay. Welcome.
Hi, and I appreciate the opportunity to address y'all briefly in this forum. And as you know, I'm the director of the Harrison County Library System. And as you know, we've requested an increase to help us fund our computer replacement. And I hope that if this is not possible, that perhaps you'll think about contributing perhaps half of that amount, or any amount would be helpful to help us meet the 2020 Windows 7 obsolescence deadline that is sort of looming over us. And as I mentioned in my remarks and my letters to you all, that without working computers, we can't run the libraries at all. Not just have computers for patrons, but we can't. Our systems don't function. And just in the little bit of remaining time, I wanted to read some comments from our patrons and your constituents. We asked them to fill out some postcards, and these are some of them that we got. And they just give some good reasons why they would like you to help them and help us. This is addressed to Mayor Gillich from, "I use the computers at Margaret Sherri Library. It's important to me to have computers at my library because I use them to print off papers for school. I'm a young mother finishing my master's degree. Printing is vital for me to finish and begin contributing to our community." It's from Heather. "I use the computers at many Harrison County libraries, mainly Margaret Sherri and Biloxi. It's important to me to have computers at my library because I'm an online student at USM. I depend on library computers to attend school. It allows me to better myself as a member of society." From Susan. "I use the computers at Biloxi Central Library to do the necessary things to help me get back to work as an over-the-road driver, so please help us keep this service available. It's my only way to communicate with employers. As you know, companies don't do paper applications anymore," underlined. "So it's extremely important to keep our libraries and community colleges updated with new equipment and software." From James. "Dear Mayor and City Council, I use the computers at Biloxi Public Library. I homeschool my children, and we all use the computers for research and learning." From Lee. "I use the computers at West Biloxi Library. It's important to me because I use them to do my homework for graduate school. It's very convenient for me to utilize them right after work." "Dear City Council, I use the computers at Wool Market in Biloxi. It's important to have computers because not everyone can afford them and/or access to the Internet. In this day and age, it's necessary for job searches and for communication." And that one's from Yvonne. "Dear Mayor and City Council, I use the computers at Biloxi Central Library. It's important because my children use them to access educational sites, and I use them when I need to print important documents. I use the computers in the local history and genealogy department for historical research." From Samuel. And I have a lot more, but I think you get the idea that it's very important to us and to the community to have computers that all of our patrons can use and that we can use to continue providing library services in Biloxi. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. No other comments on the budget? Mr. Tisdale wants to make a comment?
Yes, I'd just like to make a couple of observations for the benefit of my colleagues here. First of all, I support an increase in the Harrison County Library allotment. I think currently, we make available 600, Mr. Leonard, is it 625 or 695?
695.
695. And I think what was originally asked for was $35,000, basically for technology or computers or whatever. I would urge my colleagues to do at least half of that. The second thing that I would urge my colleagues to consider in the budget is Route 30, I think it was referred to as Route 32 in CTA. And I think one day a week, that would be $8,000 to $10,000, as I recall. Perhaps maybe a little less than that if DeIverville was involved. The other thing I'd like my colleagues to consider is that just when we were going through department budgets, the mere fact that we're going to need five new fire trucks because the fire trucks, I think, were replaced all at the same time. They weren't purchased in a staggered fashion because of Hurricane Katrina. Gotcha. So they, so, but you can't buy one a year because these have to be certified for X number of years, and that certification period is up in either the year 2020 or 2021. So in the next year or two. Five trucks at roughly a half a million, $600,000 each, that's about $3 million. Well, I would urge my colleagues to think about a mileage increase of one or two miles this year that would continue for the next couple of years, if nothing else, then to pay for those fire trucks. Not to mention other vehicles that were replaced following Katrina. These are high-mileage vehicles and first responders' vehicles in some instances. I just, I know it's going to be a tight budget the next year or two. But I've avoided saying that for five years, but tonight, I said it. Yeah, I said it. Consider a mill or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Anyone else want to make any comments?
Yeah, I'm going to go along with Dr. Tisdale on the Route 32 and also the Biloxi Weather, Harrison County Library System. And during the summer, they invite me there to watch their reading program. And computers are vital, especially with the children and learning capacity. Now, everything goes through the computer. And watching those kids, how they come along from the beginning of the summer to the end of the summer, and they're ready for school. So I agree with Dr. Tisdale. We do need to at least do half of that computer. Pay for half of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lawrence?
We're still in the middle of doing this budget. So before you start adding all kind of money to the budget, you better finish doing what we're doing originally. And then you're looking at those things. You know, everybody needs something. I don't care what you do. You could add $30,000, $40,000 in everybody's budget, and they would be swallowed up so fast. So you can't sit there, say, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. We still doing the budget. Let's finish the budget, and you put these things in them. It's that simple. I thought it ought to figure out.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, and I understand that, Mr. Lawrence. I know, I appreciate your comments. It's just, I want to give folks something to think about because we do, in fact, vote to approve the budget next week. So appreciate that. Thank you.
If that concludes comments, I'd just like to make one comment. I believe we should have another workshop on this coming Tuesday. I would recommend that. So if you'd mark on your calendars, I'm going to recommend 1:30 on Tuesday, if that works for everybody. And we got, hey, we got to roll up our sleeves, and we got a lot, we got a lot to do. I think we still need to take a hard look at those revenues. I've made my thoughts known on that, and there are some good suggestions from the other council members on some needs that we have. But we got to fit the square peg in the round hole, and it's coming down to crunch time to make that happen. This concludes the public hearing to provide the public some input. We'll go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic that they would like to talk about. If you would come up and have a seat at the front, write your name legibly on the piece of paper that's up here, and state your name and address for the clerk to record. So we'll begin on this side of the room. Anyone have anything they want to say? Raise your hand. You'd like to come up and say anything? No one? Move to the other side of the room. Anyone would like to come up and say anything? Back of the room? Come on up to the front. State your name and...
Jennifer Obar.
And what's your address?
711 Dr. Martin Luther King.
Okay. And it's normally not a question and answer, but what's your clarification? What do you want to clarify?
I want to know citizen's comments. I'm here for the Community Bank one that you have on here.
Okay. This is your three minutes, so you may proceed when you're ready.
And I don't need three minutes. Just, I appreciate what they're doing, and I appreciate the week. But I still would like for y'all to remember that we are still over there, and we were promised that we would get all of our problems straightened out, and we still not gotten them done. And the only time it really comes up is when, like, something like the cruise on the coast or something really good for the city, and then it makes us look kind of, I don't know what you want to call it, saying something. But it's the only time we can ever apparently get any kind of help. And that's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we close citizens' comments? All right. Citizen comments are now closed. Move on to the policy agenda.
Ordinance amending Section 10521 of the Code of Ordinances to include excursion vehicles, or excuse me, vessels for the Biloxi small craft harbor and Biloxi Point Cadet Marina.
I'll second it. Discussion? Speak up, Mr. Lawrence. I'm having a problem hearing you.
Turn your mic on.
On excursion boats, I said all these boats are $6 a foot. So what's the negotiation? Why are we going to give you permission to negotiate? It's $6 a foot. Ain't no negotiation.
What Councilman Lawrence has, and he and I have discussed this, pointed out, we've got boats in the harbor that don't seem to fit any category. We've got boats that are not charter boats, and they're not commercial boats. So we were seeking a way to be able to negotiate an appropriate rate for them. That's why we proposed the new category of excursion boats. What Councilman Lawrence is saying in reality is that if they're not a charter boat and they're not a commercial shrimp boat, then they fall into the same category as a pleasure boat, and that's $6 a foot. In other words, you're saying if they're not A and you're not B, then you must be C.
Correct.
Now, I like the idea of better naming the category, but he's right. If somebody's not a charter boat, and the boat in question that we have talked along about is not a charter boat, and obviously, it's not a commercial shrimping boat, so what is it?
Well, I want to make a comment. I got to make a comment. The Sailfish has been in existence, I don't know if anybody knows this, for 65 years. 65 years that boat has been in existence. Longer than Bovar has been open for tourists. And, you know, I understand the categories. I definitely understand it. But as I read this ordinance, it's very, it leaves it to a lot of discretion, and it doesn't define it like the other categories do. $6 a foot, $3 a foot, whether it's transient or commercial or whatever. And I'm struggling with this mightily. I understand that they have a lot more, I guess, passengers than maybe some of the other boats. But they're feeling a need for people that are coming and visiting and having that unique experience. They do burn fuel because they're pulling the nets. My family made those nets for a lot of years. I don't know who's making them now. But they certainly burn a lot more fuel. I don't know who's making them now, but they certainly burn a lot more fuel. They, it's a really unique attraction. It really is. And where there needs to be more than the charter boats, I understand that a little bit, but how do we define that to say, when you fall into this category, it is X amount per square foot? That's normally how you do a berth or dock space. It's by the foot. I know that can be negotiated. I know we've got two other boats that have recently returned, and if you put a pencil to it, it may be, I don't know what that number comes to per square foot, but, or per foot, but it's probably more. But it certainly deserves discussion. I think we can still negotiate something that's palatable for this attraction that's been in existence, again, for 65 years.
Councilman, I agree. 65 years, a long time. I was on it as a kid. I was on it with my kids as, when they were kids, and I was on it with my grandkids. But during those 65 years, they've raised their rates. We haven't.
Mr. Demme?
I wanna apologize for being late. Unfortunately, I couldn't clear my schedule enough to be here on time, given the rescheduling for Gordon. Likewise, neither could Mr. Moore, Brandy Moore, or their representative. None of them could be here tonight, and this really does pertain to them. I would like to table this for two weeks to give them the opportunity to be here to speak about this, so we can hear their perspectives. There might be something that, that we would love to hear from. Well, then I would request that we wait till two weeks to do the next reading, then. That's not as funny as I thought it was gonna be.
No, I, I, I don't, I mean, the fact that we have a second reading, we can schedule a second reading when they're here. We've now gone on almost four months since we first presented a lease to them. And I realize that each of these leases will be discreet and different, but each of them will come to the council for approval because they're all contracts. So if we were to do another one next week with somebody else that we said was an excursion boat, that lease would come to the council because it's a contract, and those contracts all have to come here. So it's not like this, the administration can go behind your back and sign a contract with the boat. I don't think the administration has a problem with scheduling the second reading such that the folks affected can be here.
I think that's appropriate. I think we're fine.
Okay.
It all goes back to sign a charter boat. That's the first thing. It was always billed, and that's why they only paid $3.
You wanna say round?
Yeah, and they considered him the old charter boat. Well, they're not a charter boat, and I'm gonna have them right now.
As a point of order, this is an ordinance, it's a first reading, we're probably shouldn't be discussing it because it is a first reading. We've moved it. So let's go ahead and end the discussion right now because it's, we're out of order. And we'll pick it up on the second reading at our next scheduled council meeting.
Mr. President, you can have a discussion anytime. It's not out of order. Whether you do it on a first reading or the second reading, you can discuss anything, anytime you want. That's why we have meetings. So it's not out of order.
All right. Noted. We'll move on to the resolutions.
Resolution to grant conditional use approval to specifically grant formal approval for duplex without authorization to become illegal conforming use for property identified as 1082 AMB Bolton Lane.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Lawrence?
I noticed it's in, you know...
This is Bolton Lane. Could you, who's in charge?
You wanna move it for discussion? This one you can.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale on, or discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Creel, come up here and explain what's going on, or what you're trying to do.
Now, this is just a structure that is in single-family zoning, that at some point in the past was converted to a duplex, and they came in to get, to apply for a separate meter for one of the units, and we couldn't, we were restricted from issuing them a permit for the second electrical service unless they were brought into compliance. So a duplex is a conditional use in RS 7.5 zoning. That's all this is. They're just bringing the structure into compliance with the ordinance.
So they have to have two meters?
That would you say? Well, they wanna have two meters so that, instead of trying to split the bill every month between the two tenants that they have in the building, they wanna have a second meter so that each one would be responsible for their own bill.
But if that was supposed to be the case, then why did it took so long? Because it's been a duplex for a while, so what is the problem that you took so long separating this thing? Not you.
No, this, this new owner just bought the property in the last year, and she occupies the bottom floor, and they're renting out the upper floor, and so she realized that she had a non-conforming situation and came in and made the application. This was, this change was made by a previous owner.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, they, I remember when it was built, I was a kid and just happened to know where it was. I think, as I recall, it was built as a, a single-family residence and converted to a duplex, and then these are the new owners, and as Mr. Creel said, that they found out it's out of compliance, they're trying to get it back into compliance, so...
That's right.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
All in favor? Opposed?
Resolution appointing Leroy Carney at large representative to the Biloxi Architectural and Historical Review Commission.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Moved by Mr. Gines. Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion?
Why do we have an at-large person? What's the purpose of that?
Way the ordinance provides for that.
What ordinance?
Architectural Review Ordinance.
And who set that rule?
You did.
All right, and when they do that?
22 years ago.
Okay, so we could change that rule?
Sure.
I mean, it's supposed to be everybody's ward represented.
This is only one of this ward specific. This is one where the people have to live in the historic district, except for the one at-large member, which is every time.
Right, that's why I said I don't understand that. We post people to live in it, then we got when somebody floating around doing whatever. I don't see any reason for that.
We also have an at-large member in the planning commission.
Yeah, we're talking about somebody, the planning commission has to be an ward also, correct? They all have to live inside the ward, in the planning commission.
Okay, in the planning commission, each county member has two representatives in their ward. Place a fourth thing, board fifteen members. So if one at-large member is every time, then they're, they're district.
So that's the same case here?
Same way with the charge. You got at-large on the A, charge.
Obviously.
I wasn't living in the historic district, except for one at-large.
Why not? There's seven wards. Is that rule? Is that one of the rules we made up? Just trying to figure it all this out. Sometimes it's time to straighten these things out.
Bill, you wanna come in on it?
Yeah.
Straighten them out, Bill.
Bill, you didn't get the red shirt memo?
I've been playing in the rain all day. Sorry about that. State law allows for up to nine, you can have five to nine members of an architectural and historical review commission by state law. And the state law doesn't say anything about which districts they live in or whatever. You just, you can have maximum of nine. Our ordinance, the way it's written, the way y'all adopted it years ago, was seven people have to live inside of a historic district, and two of them don't have to. So that's, that's the at-large, are just two people that do not live inside a historic district.
So the state law don't really say anything? Up to nine?
State law just limits the number of people to nine, no more than nine.
That's another law thing. There's no lawyers write all this stuff, you know?
Have a comment, Ken.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, does Mr. Carney replace somebody, or has his position just been vacant?
Mr. Carney is replacing Ms. Stallings, or replacing Ms. Carney, who, who's a longtime resident here in Biloxi, who knows the lay of the land and, and have a good insight of what we're looking for in our community.
I know Mr. Carney. He's a good fella. His son was here today.
Matter of fact, there he is, right there.
That's him.
Mr. Carney's son.
Oh, is, is he the one who's gonna be on the AHRC?
Not him.
That's his father?
His father.
There you go.
I thought you said you knew him.
I do. I know his son and the father.
I'm teasing.
I don't know all you gladdies, but I know most of those Carneys.
All right. Let's go ahead and take the vote. All in favor? Those opposed?
Resolution of the City Council to affix the tax levy for calendar year 2018.
Motion?
Discussion.
Do you wanna move it for discussion?
Move discussion, yeah.
All right. Mr. Lawrence moved it for discussion. Do we have a second?
Any changes?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Tisdale, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
There's any changes at all to the system in the tax? It's the same it was last year? All the levy? No, no. So there's changes. You said in total. So what changed?
Mr. McEwen, can you come up, because this is being recorded? It just helps.
We had some small changes. The retirement millage went down slightly, so that extra millage, and I think it was .19 or 1/8 of a mil.
.18.
1/8. Went to the general fund. And so that was, that was one change. Other than that, there wasn't any change on the city's millage side, the school system. They moved some monies between the district maintenance account and their shortfall note and, and that. In fact, this year, the debt service millage for them is eliminated altogether. So, other than that, the totals are the same.
So it was a wash, you just moved the millage around, fractions of a mil actually, but the total mills for the school and the city are the same as it was last year?
43.37, we're 30.1. So it's 73.47 total.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. McEwen?
How much did we pay the school system in taxes?
I think that comes out to around 18 million in tax monies, 18 or 19, something like that.
It's amazing we paid that school district, the county, pay everybody more money than we take in.
Oh, yeah.
We have a problem, you know? I would give a lot of money away to everybody, and yet we can't keep enough to run the city. I'm not, that's nothing to do with you, I'm just saying, you know? Stop and think about how much money we give out that we don't get to keep. What is it, 22 million for the county? You know, about $40 million that we pay out to other people. Those are the things that we need to look at. They get 10%, that minus 4 million, people will spend that real quick.
All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, go back to what I said a little bit earlier. I mean, if I, if I was gonna suggest a millage increase here, I would think you might wanna go for two mills for general revenue purposes, increasing the millage from 18.76 to 20.76. Mill generates about $530, $540,000. On a $100,000 house, or for every $100,000 of assessed valuation on your house, you'd pay $10 a year. So if you're in a $200,000 house, you'd pay 20 bucks a year. That comes down to, what, 50 cents, about 55 cents a week to pay for new fire trucks that we're not gonna be able to afford in a couple of years, and that's just fire trucks. So anyway, I'm just tossing this out for consideration.
Are you proposing an amendment to this?
I will, if, if, if anybody out there has the guts to second it.
We ain't doing it.
I'm, I'm sorry. Hate to interrupt. Actually, to do that, we'd have to go back and re-advertise and hold a public hearing on the tax, on the increase.
It wouldn't pass anyway.
Okay, and just my concluding comment was, remember that it's not going to pass when we start looking at these numbers at the workshop. I'm just, and, and everybody's invited back to that public meeting to get a little more background.
Good points.
Thank you. We'll hear from you. I'm sure I'll hear from you. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
You can't really change it.
Those opposed, no, there's, there's no, as it's written on here. Those opposed?
Do, um...
Did you get that, Demme? Tisdale? Opposed? Everybody else is yea. All right. Motion passes five to two. All right, consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Ms. Newman. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Demme.
But it passed.
Oh, you didn't?
You didn't?
I thought you raised your hand. Do we have a second on the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Gines. Seconded by Mr. Gines. Discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, on A, I'd, this is about the insurance. I was still looking at some movement on the co-pays, and I'd like to table that until, we're getting ready for a meeting Tuesday. We can bring that up there, discuss that with everybody.
All right.
I have an option to me, make a motion that we table it.
All right.
Before you do that, may I point out that open enrollment is this week?
Okay.
We're kinda, kinda running out of time.
I like to table it anyway.
All right.
They'll live through it.
We have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale to table it until our Tuesday meeting. Any other discussion on tabling it? All in favor?
Wait, let's, hold on. Discussion on the motion, real quick?
I asked. You gotta be quick.
Gotta be quicker than that. Open enrollment is this coming week, the week of the workshop?
Correct.
Okay, I don't think we can take any, can we take any official action during that meeting, Peter?
Change it. We don't have a meeting Tuesday. We have our, our... Friday, we have a special meeting to approve the budget September 14, so, you know, if you were gonna...
You bring it ahead.
Table that, that's when you would wanna do it on, but to your question...
So whose, whose decision is to change open enrollment? Is that Blue Cross Blue Shield, or is that Bancorp South?
Si.
Yeah, if you would.
Yep.
All we're, all we're asking is for Blue Cross to be the official representative, which is, you know, been playing along, we'll make changes that would be effective January 1st on the Blue Cross plan.
Right.
So what we're really here today...
Doesn't affect.
...has no effect on PFA or...
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it. Okay. So we're tabling it until which meeting?
14.
Well, given that it doesn't affect co-pays, do you wanna withdraw your table? That way it doesn't have, we don't have an issue with open enrollment? We'll address co-pays for the January 1st.
Well, I'd like to know what they, when they enroll, what they doing, what the people doing enrollment, they gonna pay whether they're co-paying or not paying co-pays. This is administration thing, what he's saying, that he, all he's saying, this thing is administrated. But it all, the administration will be passed, so we hadn't passed anything yet.
All right, so this resolution, as I understand it, we're authorizing that it's a self-funded group health insurance as it is right now. If and when we make any changes at any time, they would go into effect anyway January 1st, irregardless of the enrollment next week. Correct, Si?
Correct.
Okay. So it, nothing is gonna change anything by we tabling it or moving forward? Does, does...
I'll withdraw my motion to make you happy.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Did we have the, the second and the original has been withdrawn.
You got, you deal with...
Appreciate the cooperation. Appreciate the cooperation.
You deal with.
Very amicable and civil. So the motion carries to table it, or, or there is no table, there is no table. All right. So can we vote on the original motion?
Not yet.
And second?
With the consent agenda, Kenning.
Oh, it's with the consent agenda, okay. Anybody have questions on item B?
I had, I do, on O. I had two problems with this. First of all, I don't know what exactly we're giving Mississippi Coliseum, we're getting together with them for four hundred thousand dollars to do what? Why are they reimbursing us four hundred thousand dollars?
They're, as you know, that roadway runs from Pass Road to the beach and goes through property, some of which is owned by the Coliseum. So there is actually land that we're going to acquire that we're going to buy from the Coliseum. On the other hand, there are design additions the Coliseum wants done that are not part of our, right now, we just need a road that goes from A to B. They want to have an exit, they want to have an underpass from a parking lot to the other side. All of these things cost more design and more to build. So what we said to the Coliseum was, we would consider putting these adds into our project as long as you pay your share. And their share, we've agreed, is for, not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. Remember, this is an eighty-twenty match, so that's their share of our twenty percent. So they've agreed, they've agreed to give us up to, not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars in exchange for the additions to the design that they're looking for, which is an off-ramp before it gets to the beach, and an underpass just past a railroad track where people can go from one side of the road to the other without crossing the road.
Well, my question to you is, I've got a lot of phone calls, probably Paul has too, how's that affect the homeowners? Because they don't understand what y'all doing here, you think they're running through your, right, the people that own property down there.
It, it, we, if, I could make this, I could give the council this, a copy if you'd like. Every month, I get a list of the parcels that are to be, that are surveyed and are to be made offers on, and, and just like on Division Street for the Keister Gate project, we have to acquire a bunch of properties along in there. All of those property owners, they may say they don't know what's going on, but they've all been approached, and their land has all been surveyed already. So they know what's going on, they just haven't gotten their offers yet. And, you know, one by one, where they're getting offers for their property, and then there'll be a just compensation stuff coming to this council, just like we did on Division Street.
That's the problem is, you barbecue in your backyard, you got people flicking flags and everything around your yard. I know what you're saying, but you still, these people still don't understand what's going on, what they're going to do with the road. They're going to take all the houses, where they're going with the road. What exactly been officially declared what they're doing with Oakwood?
Shall we have a, a public hearing then?
Fine, I don't mind.
Or, yeah.
Or do something.
Or come to my ward's, Ward Five meeting, September twenty-sixth.
Absolutely.
At the Snyder Center, where we will discuss just this extension. With the city engineer there, and, and I've gotten a couple of calls, George, and I've spoken with folks and gotten a couple of diagrams to, to them. So we're just kind of getting the process started here, this is like the starter's pistol.
Can we go to tisdale.com or something like that?
Actually, you can go to tisdaleforbiloxi.com.
Okay.
And find out more about that.
Thought I'd get that in for you, so.
And I hate to, I hate to bring this up, I don't know who did this resolution, but you know, Fayard is not the councilman anymore. Y'all still got Fayard listed on this resolution. Nathan Barrett is the, you've been elected, right, Nate?
What's that?
You've been elected, you're Ward Seven, right?
Was I elected?
Okay, yeah, okay, so somebody got to pay attention to, put, take his name off this thing.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any additional discussion on this item? Anybody? Okay. George, you have any, a couple more, and then we'll move on, we've got some people over here.
Go ahead, I'll come back to you.
All right, we'll come back to you. Mr. Barrett, you have anything?
Y'all, y'all wait down there?
Mr. Guines, you got anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, just like, I like the idea that we're, we're going to order some more Christmas lights, and I like, based on Division Street, maybe complete by November, and so I like some to come down Division Street, that's all.
Okay. Ms. Newman?
All I would like to say is, for B, if that study is anything like what I experienced this morning, I am not for spending another dime, that's all.
Okay.
Actually, that's almost the exact same comment I was gonna, was gonna offer. The, the study that we got this morning, they, they gave us the three books of the workshop, right? But we, we paid them to come, almost illustrate what they wrote in their books. We could have just gotten their books and probably gotten the same information. However, in this, this, um, study that we're ordering, or we're, we're purchasing, it's a seven thousand dollar study, and we're paying three and a half thousand, and Doherty Mortgage is paying the other three and a half. What is, what is the relationship with Doherty and why Doherty?
Well, in, in the housing, Bogdan, can you jump in whenever you're ready? But literally, these are metrics that will come up and position these folks, if, should they propose, especially on some of the land we already have, to build homes. These are things that will, would, they would use to bank, to, to get the financing they need. But this is pretty much standard kind of metrics that need to be in a study that will say, yeah, this is the impact of, of what you can expect if you build these, these houses on properties.
So this is.
This is not, this is real.
The scope of this study is, is downtown Biloxi? And precisely, is that the new Howard area, or is this?
Yeah, the whole, whole downtown, from Civic Center to, uh, from the beach to, to Division Street, or to, yeah, Division Street.
All right, and this, will this actually provide true metrics? Of not just?
This, you know, in meeting with some of the developers, and they, we need, has these studies been done? We, we say, hey, it has not, can I reference a, a study of this type? You know, so this is our effort to get one. So not only this, you know, this interested party, but anyone else, so this is a real valid thing.
So this is something we didn't need in our inventory.
That's right.
To market our area. Okay, that's thirty-five hundred dollars, that satisfies my inquiries, thank you.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, what's, what's the source of funding on, I didn't notice the source of funding on this study that Mr. Demming was referring to with Doherty Mortgage? Do we know where's that coming from, whose budget?
Oh, I, I'm not sure.
Council, I thought it was coming out of downtown Capitol Project, let me check.
Okay, all right, it's, I know, I know it's coming from somewhere, usually we have a source listed, no sources listed there. On item C. Where's it say?
Paul, I'm sorry for interrupting. The actual resolution says that funding to be provided from fiscal year 2019 through administrative budget from other professional services.
Okay. On item C. This is a SAFER grant, we're hiring nine new firefighters. I'm assuming, because we've got a new fire station coming up, and at some point, that new fire station's going to open, are these nine firefighters for that station specifically? Or no, is it to replace folks?
That's correct, and Chief Boni and I have talked about this and talked about this till we're blue in the face. This is a, I want to say we're playing dodgeball. That, that station is scheduled to be done in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. Now, in the time I've been with the city, short time I've been with the city, I haven't seen a single project finish when it was scheduled to finish. So, so I'm, I know that it won't be any earlier than the fourth quarter, probably in the first quarter of the next fiscal year when we would need the firemen. The grant, though, we have to accept now. And, and what we're hoping, and they're working, and I'll let Chief head on, we, we've talked to these SAFER grant people pretty regularly, and they understand this is for a station that's under construction. So we're going to try and milk this as long as we can before we have to actually ask for the money. We're hoping not to have to ask for the money till at least the very end of the fiscal year.
Gotcha. And so then, are these positions?
Are the nine positions needed for that new fire station?
All right, so this is, is that reflected in the fiscal year nineteen budget, or not at this point?
It is not at this point.
Okay.
And, and may not need to be. Cross that bridge when we get to it.
And where would that funding come from, the six hundred and fifty thousand?
It would, it would, it would have to come from the general fund if we did it, if we had to do it in this new year. I, I don't think we're going to have to.
Why is it so hard? That's almost forty percent of the money.
I mean, if we have to, the chief doesn't want to hear this, but if we had to, we could leave that fire station sit vacant for a couple of months. And, and if we had to, if we couldn't get the money to hire the firemen until the next fiscal year.
So it's, so it's a timing thing based on when that structure's going to be done?
It's timing, and, and Chief can elaborate.
The, the, we have to accept or deny the grant, we have one hundred and eighty days to accept or deny the grant. We, I mean, we have to accept or deny the grant within thirty days. We have one hundred and eighty days before we can enact, start using the money or hire the people. That's the maximum time we have. If we choose to go past that one hundred and eighty days, the only penalty would be that the grant would be for a less amount of time. Whatever amount of time you choose to, to take before you hire these people. The grant's for three years, it's, it'll be for three years. Whenever we, it is approved, and y'all accept it, the grant is for three years from that period. If we choose to use two years of the grant, then, then that's what we'll get, you know, just the two years. You, you're not, you're not penalized if you do or don't take it. It's just the amount of time that you use the grant is what will be paid out.
So the money, you don't need the money all at one time anyway then?
No, no, it's a three-year grant.
This was not a happy negotiation that the chief and I had, but, but we, we got a very tight budget this year, and so we're just trying to push it till next year.
So I'd like to point out, it's in the, but we have it budgeted an amount for new firemen. So if the fire station opens, we can enact the SAFER grant for the new firemen, right? For the period of time. We accept it, we enact it when we need them. If the fire station does not open, and, and it goes into the next year, then we, that's, that's another decision we would make and.
No, you still.
But we don't need it, we don't, I mean, we don't need what's budgeted if we're going to use a SAFER grant. Bottom line.
Well, you, you have matching, you have matching funds, there's the cost to the city, and if I understood you correctly, chief, the longer we take past that one hundred and eighty days, the more money we're going to be paying for those firefighters.
Right.
So that's why, so there is a, a string attached to that one hundred and eighty day window.
But it isn't the full amount that we have in the budget.
No, it's not the full amount.
That needs to be adjusted, that, that's another discussion.
Well, and, and that's why I asked Mr. Leonard, is it's reflected in the fiscal year nineteen budget? And it's not, and the anticipation is, we have to see when the station is completed, then if it's not completed till October first of next year, we're talking about including this in the 2020 budget.
Right, so, so we give up, at worst case, we give up three months of the grant.
Right.
Right, okay. I understand that. The next item is J, and Chief Miller, I'm assuming, deals with software, embedded security solutions. Is this software related to the body cameras?
No, it's related to our vehicles, car cameras.
Car cameras, okay. Thank you. And on item K, I'm hoping that's going to be an LED traffic signal?
Only, only the best for the city of Biloxi.
Can it be solar powered? Okay, that's all, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Anybody else have anything? All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, and I'll get the exceptions afterwards, all in favor. Those opposed, Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
No.
None? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
You know, I'll pass this time.
All right.
Yeah, put me down as a no on item L, the Christmas lights.
Mr. Barrett?
Bah Humbug.
Mr. Barrett? Okay. Lucy, you got all those? Okay. All right, code enforcement hearings, Mr. Creel, when you're ready, begin.
Cassel on the agenda, America Power Properties, 270 Rodenberg Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Anyone, any discussion? Anyone here to represent 270 Rodenberg Avenue? There being no one, this case is closed.
Cassel on the agenda, Dig J T Properties, 13081 Arkandrade, that case has been resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Creel.
Hey, Jerry? Going back to last week, I told you I tried to file Eddie Graham, you know, with the property on Highland Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Who would you send in that mail in to? The letter you said you sent out, because I was trying to locate him, I'm having a hard time.
I don't have the file with me, Mr. Lawrence, I have to check on that, but I can call you with it, let you know.
All right, let's move on to routine agenda, is there a motion? Mr. Tisdale, is there a second, by Mr. Guines? Discussion?
Yeah, Walt, Walt, somebody needs to send him to give us some money. Mr. Roding? That's why you can't do anything on Friday either. How much money we got in? That's why we, if one will make sure. These five-thirty meetings on Friday don't get it, do they?
Okay, you got your question answered? A little bit? Okay. All in favor of the routine agenda? Those opposed, chair will entertain motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
All right, by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor. Those opposed, meeting is recessed.
One thirty Tuesday.